I'd like to call the County Commissioners' meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025, to order at this time, and we will start with the invocation by our county attorney, Mr. Brett DeSalms.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with the wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. We pray for our military and our first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a beautiful Monday morning in a packed room, and we'd like to acknowledge the elected officials with us today or this morning, and we'll start with our sheriff, Sheriff Chris Thomas in the back with us. Here in the middle is town alderman from North Topsail Beach, Rick Grant, and I haven't seen anyone else come in. If someone else has come in, just let me know, but I think that's the two that are here this morning, so we appreciate you being here. So at this time, we'd like to have a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the items on the consent agenda. If we don't have any that would like to be considered separately, we need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So we'll move right into our presentations this morning, and we'll start with proclamations. We have five of those, and we'll start with the first one, Month of the Military Child, and Vice Chairman Knapp will read that proclamation.
Thank you. So as we know, today is the month, this month is the month of the military child, and I'd like to read the proclamation to all of you that are present here and that are listening at home. Whereas Onslow County is home to approximately 12,000 military children from every branch of service in the Guard and Reserve, and whereas military children move an average of eight times from kindergarten to 12th grade, three times more often than their civilian peers, and whereas military children support our active-duty troops through multiple moves and deployments, injuries and illnesses, and periods of uncertainty in war while displaying resilience, grit, determination, and sacrifice, and whereas Onslow County Schools were recently recognized as a Purple Start District as a result of their efforts to ensure school-adopted military-friendly practices that support all mobile students, and whereas Onslow County Schools, Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune, Marine Corps Air Station New River, the Marine Corps School Liaisons, and the various municipalities and communities of Onslow County collaboratively support these mobile children in schools, businesses, communities of faith, and civic organizations, and whereas April is nationally recognized as the month of the military child, and purple is the combination, and red, white, and blue also represents all military services. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners do proclaim April 11th, 2025 as Purple Up Day, and encourage individuals, businesses, and organizations to display purple in their community spaces where purple clothing and otherwise utilize the color to show support and honor our smallest heroes, the children of our military servicemen and women, presented this seventh day of April, 2025.
As Vice Chairman Knapp goes down to present this, accepting the proclamation will be Danielle Merrill and Kevin Dick, Military Liaisons for Onslow County Schools, and Julie Fulton and Megan Faye, School Liaisons for Camp Lejeune.
They got it adjusted perfectly. Hey, this proclamation does mean something. I'm the product of a military family. I've been overseas, I've moved, I don't even know how many times. My dad was deployed to Vietnam at the time, twice, once in the Army and once in the Air Force, so that was kind of miserable for us. I remember my mom and I living in Okinawa to go to Japan to visit him when he was on R and R from Korea, and that was a goat rope. I still remember to this day. And I must have moved, I don't know how many times, various high schools, various middle schools and junior highs back then, and the kids, you've got to remember, the kids, they present a unique background. The kids that have been around, that have been around the world have experiences that no other kid that grew up and was raised in a particular area have, and it's unique to them, and I think personally, the military child seems to mature faster than most kids because they've been exposed to various elements of deployment. And you've got to remember, the wives, just like me, I'm a retired law enforcement official, just like military officials, okay? It's the family that suffers when their loved one or their husband is deployed or their mother or wife is deployed. Six months to a year, they don't have another parent, they're always worried about the constant dangers that they face, so this is really important to recognize our military children because they go through a lot, and we demand a lot from our military children. So when you think of a veteran, think of the spouses and think of the kids as well. And so I'm proud to present this proclamation on behalf of Onslow County and our recognition of military kids and their awareness of them, and make this a special month for them. So thank you.
I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of our team to say how much we enjoy working with Onslow County, Onslow County Schools. The bases have been a great partner with the county, and we just appreciate everything that you guys do. I'd also like to introduce, brand new today, our New River School Liaison for the Marine Corps, Brittany St. Seer, and stand up. And we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
And now, at this time, Commissioner Bennett will read the proclamation for National Coin Week 2025, and representatives from the Jacksonville Camp Lejeune Coin Club will accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually thank you for giving me the proclamation with the hardest words. State of North Carolina County, Onslow Proclamation, National Coin Week 2024. Whereas the American Numerismatic Association, NAN, is a nonprofit federally chartered education organization that has sponsored National Coin Week since 1924, and whereas the Jacksonville Camp Lejeune Coin Club is an ANA member club dedicated to promoting numismatics in its community, and whereas the theme for 2025 National Coin Week is Iconic Change: Pop Culture and Coins Unite, and whereas coins, paper money, and related objects have long been used to commemorate notable people, places, and events throughout history, and whereas the designs on United States money tell the story of our country's history and help form our national identity, and whereas collecting coins, paper money, and other numismatic objects has always been one of the nation's most cherished and popular pastimes, and whereas local clubs across the country are celebrating National Coin Week by sharing their hobby with others. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledges April 20 through 26, 2025, as National Coin Week in Onslow County, and calls upon its citizens to celebrate with exhibits and activities to increase the knowledge of numismatics and promote the joy of collecting coins and paper money, presented this seventh day of April, 2025.
For the Jacksonville Camp Lejeune Coin Club, Mr. Alvin Barrett will be accepting.
Guys, thank you for being here. Appreciate what you do. If you have anything to say, help yourself.
First, thank the Commissioners for the proclamation. I also want to welcome anybody who would love to come to one of our coin club meetings to come out on the second Thursday of any month to the Commerce Center over on Gum Branch Road, with after six till eight for our meetings. And actually, this year was celebrated our 65th year as a coin club. Also, during National Coin Week and as well as during this month, check your change. Instead of using credit cards, use cash. You may find something in there you haven't seen for a while. Some of the members are going to be putting into circulation, some $2 bills would be put in circulation, some golden dollars, which are not gold, they're magnesium. You may find bucko nickels, you may find the old wheat cent. You just never know what you might find in your change.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For Child Abuse Awareness Month, Commissioner Carpenter will read the proclamation, and representatives from the Onslow County Department of Social Services will accept the proclamation.
State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month 2025. Whereas children are our state's most valuable members as well as our state's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of North Carolina, and Child Protective Services social workers assessed 1,777 reports of child abuse, neglect, and dependency in Onslow County during 2024, and whereas positive childhood experiences like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children, and whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family, and whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious public health issue affecting every community, and finding solutions requires input and action from our families, child-serving organizations, schools, faith-based groups, businesses, governmental agencies, and civic leaders, and whereas children who live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect, and whereas we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state, and local levels. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognize April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in this country, presented on the day, seventh day of April, 2025.
And representatives from the Onslow County Department of Social Services will accept the proclamation this morning.
That's a team. Children, as we said in the proclamation, are our most valuable and vulnerable resources, and a resource that we really must prioritize and protect as a community. It's important we continue to bring the reality of child abuse in our community to the light so that as a community, we might best address it. I want to thank you all, these Onslow County Social Services team, for all you do on the front lines of this battle. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Carpenter and members of the board, I would like to thank you for recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. The theme for this year is Powered by Hope, Strengthened by Prevention, with a focus on the fact that stronger families create healthier communities. While the staff that you see behind me are on the front lines addressing abuse and neglect after it has occurred, it is actually you as the community and families that can have the biggest impact on preventing child abuse and neglect. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, guys. If I stood here and shook all your hands, I might take your minute.
Thank you, and at this time, as everybody's returning to their seats, Commissioner Buchanan will be reading the proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week 2025.
Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics is critical to protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone Onslow County Communications Center, and whereas a skilled public safety telecommunicator is the first and most critical contact our citizens have to emergency services, and are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety, and whereas telecommunications on the Onslow County Emergency Services Department had contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas emergencies can strike at any time, and we rely on the vigilance, excuse me, and preparedness of these individuals 24 hours a day, $365 days a year. Now therefore, we proclamation Onslow County Board of Commissioners declare this week, April 13, 2025, through April 19, 2025, National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Onslow County, in honor of the men and women who diligently, professionally keep our communities safe and sound.
Representatives from the Onslow County Emergency Services will accept the proclamation.
This is interesting for me because this is an honor and a privilege for me to do this proclamation. I'm one of those individuals, I've been around this business a long time in law enforcement, and 1973 rescue was dispatched to me because I had been shot in Swansboro, so I was actually dispatched by ambulance to us to pick me up and take me to the hospital, and this is way back in 1973. And I can go beyond that. When I first got in law enforcement in 1969, downtown Jacksonville, they had call boxes. Anybody know where they are? You call into the station, you try to get help. It's come a long way from them. We went from those big radios to everything that we had in JPD. I went through the Jacksonville Police Department, and when I was working there, we had a dispatch room, it was a small room. Today, our telecommunications are the backbone of this community. They support law enforcement, our paramedics, everybody, the fire services and everything else like that. These individuals are the lifeline to me as a law enforcement officer, anybody that's in public safety. Without them, we can't stay in the actual mood that we need to work for on the streets, or the paramedics when they have to answer calls, or our firefighters. It is so important that these telecommunications, I can speak about you guys for on and on, and I've been around a lot of you a long time, but when you go back to the old saying, you know, communications is what rules the world, and that's what these telecommunications do.
Thanks, sir. I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Board of Commissioners and the leadership team with Onslow County for letting us put all the 911 calls on hold to come accept these. That was a joke. But seriously, thank you for representing us and having us out here and recognizing us for the things that we do. Nobody ever calls 911 on the best day of their life, and we are that trained professional on the other end of the line that's ready to handle those calls for you, so thank you.
At this time, we'll ask our telecommunications to stay, and Mr. Ray Silence will be presenting some awards in recognition of extraordinary service. Mr. Silence?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to start out today by honoring the folks that had done CPR instructions on an emergency to save a life. We have Courtney McPherson had two saves within last year. Justine Ramadi had two saves for the last year. Allison Martinez had a save. Stephanie Allen had a save. Bobby Sessom's had two saves. Kelly Kennedy had one save. Brian Cole had a save. Jennifer Parsons had a save. Andrew Rodriguez had a save. Destiny Otto had a save. And Kaitlyn Fusen had a save, two saves. Sorry about that. Now, we're going to move on to the telecommunications that helped in successfully delivering babies on the phone. Kaitlyn Blakely, Katia Blakely, I'm sorry, she had a boy. She delivered a boy. Lindsey Stevens delivered a boy. Kelly Kennedy delivered a girl. And Lee McPherson delivered a girl. And thank you again.
Yep. Congratulations to all the telecommunications. We also understand to have such a great team of telecommunications, they need a great leader to do that, and Ray Silence is our director, I don't know if director is the right terminology there, I'll make sure that Ray Silence is the one that coordinates and is our leader in that area. So let's give a big hand to Ray Silence and his team. He is the Telecommunications Division Chief. At this time, we will have the Community Child Protection Team and Community Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report, and that'll be Tondra Leach, Social Work Program Manager. That's a big, long title for Ray.
Chairman Foster, Vice Chairman Knapp, Commissioners Bennett, Buchanan, Carpenter, Davis, and Paget, and County Manager, Smitherman. Good morning to all of you and to all the citizens here in Onslow County, and for those that are serving Onslow County, thank you. I'm Tondra Leach, I'm the Social Work Program Manager with Onslow County Department of Social Services. I'm elected chair for the Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team, which was CCPT and CFPT, and it is my honor to deliver to you guys our annual report. So what does CCPT and CFPT do? So we are a group of professionals who gather to review not only the medical examiner's report, we review death transcripts, police reports, child welfare reports, and any of the other community reports at hand. We are trying to discuss and find out what services have been put in place with families and the outcomes of those services, what the circumstances are surrounding the death of our juveniles and youth, and then we report our suggestions for prevention for future child death. You may ask, who is serving on our team? So we have both mandated and appointed members. Our mandated team members are such as Social Services Director and Staff, our Health Director and Staff. We also have the schools. We have Board of Social Services, people appointed to us, as well as we do have our local judge, guardian at light, and other professionals as you see in the PowerPoint. The appointed members are those that you, our county commissioners, have appointed to our committee, such as EMS, they are fabulous, JPD, Fire Marshal, Youth Services, Family Advocacy on base, the Department of Juvenile Justice. We also have representative from our Child Advocacy Center, and we also have a parent who unfortunately had lost a child who comes to our meetings and is there dedicated to helping to prevent future deaths. Why do we review deaths in Onslow County? There are several reasons. However, the North Carolina General Statute, first off, is the 7B 1406 that guides us to review all child fatalities, regardless if they're involved with the Department of Social Services or not. So we identify the deficiencies in delivering of services of public welfare agencies. We make and carry out recommendations for changes to prevent future deaths. We promote understanding of the causes of the deaths, and like I said, we are required by the North Carolina General Statute. When you see this graph, we had five fatalities that were involved with the Department of Social Services, but we also reviewed another 45 cases. So when you look at our 2024 numbers, we're actually reviewing the cases that came in in 2023. So we had different types of reasons for these deaths, unsafe sleep habits, medical issues, premature or prenatal deaths, traffic accidents, homicides, suicide, drowning, and even a child in an overheated vehicle. In our child welfare cases, the five that we had, we had one teen death, two infant deaths, and two homicides. The cases, co-sleeping was one of the biggest ones, the prenatal challenges or challenges, the lack of parental supervision, whether that be a child in a hot car, or lack of supervision of children who are using opioids, unfortunately, and then the medical conditions that even the parents may not have been able to change, but we still do review those fatalities. So as we take a moment to look back in time, this is a graph that will show you the deaths due to the unsafe sleep practices here in Onslow County, and then you can see that, hmm, for some reason, my little screen, there is a fatality in 2023 and in 2024. I'm not sure why that's not showing up, but there was a fatality in both of those years. And then compare that to our teen suicide, where it's been either a gunshot or hanging for our youth who are committing suicide. You can tell where the burst went up during COVID, unfortunately, due to that isolation that we had. Oh, there it is. Sorry. Strategies to address the causes. So what we're trying to do as a team is that we're trying ongoing education, whether it be from a billboard, flyers, brochures, and all the committee members have all the information to disperse to everyone in Onslow County. We are teaching people how to recognize and report child abuse and neglect issues. We're constantly talking about child car seat safety, not leaving children in the car, making sure the children are harnessed in their car seats correctly. We are continuing our education efforts when it comes to safe sleep for infants. One of the biggest ones that I always talk about is even if you're not in the bed with your child, you may be in your recliner. Even this year, we've already had a child fatality of someone in their recliner going to sleep with their child, and their child passed away. That is unsafe sleep habits. We are continuing our education efforts on being trauma-informed with our training and being aware. We are also, pregnancy risk factors is important for prenatal care, and that comes with our co- and that comes with our community partners in the medical field, as well as our child welfare field and our health departments. We are continuing community outreach. All of the members participate in community gatherings throughout the county throughout the year, and we all talk about the same issues when it comes to childhood safety. We are all trying to prevent child abuse and neglect from occurring. The barriers. So, when you look at our barriers of protecting our children, there are two main ones that we're looking at. The timely access to medical services or their lack of. Trying to connect families with the proper mental health resources is very valuable to our families to help prevent child abuse and neglect and child fatalities. Receiving medical records from military providers has been an ongoing barrier for us in the CCPT/CFT Committee. Challenges for protecting our children. The parental opioid and substance abuse continues to be an issue, not only with just parental opioid, but even the youth with opioids. Parental failure to follow safe sleep protocols, parental failure to supervise children appropriately. We're also, right now, in the planning and reorganizing and restructuring from the North Carolina General Statutes is having us completely redo what CCPT and CFPT does. So, a lot of our year, this year, has been planned around all of the changes that we're, that's going to be taking place. We will be known now as local teams versus CCPT/CFT. But we are a multidisciplinary team for death reviews. Some of the accomplishments that we have had as a committee and as a community. We distribute pack and plates in car seats to promote safety through our community partners. The child welfare has begun tracking mental health referrals and the follow-ups of what's going on. We attend state trainings as a multidisciplinary team, as well as individual agencies. Our agencies participate in the National Night Out. And there are several of the agencies that are participating in car seat installations and trainings. Very proud of those. How CCPT and CFPT helps. So, Onslow County has Safe Kids Coalition. We partner with them at Community Outreach. We have partnership with the Care Management at Risk for Children with the Community Resources in promoting safe sleep, and that is with our Health Department, C-Mark Team. We have a plan of care for, for safe care is developed before a child is discharged from a hospital, when they are diagnosed as substance affected. So, we make sure that they have a plan in place. Also, if you guys drive by the Consolidated Human Services, you will see the Blue Pinwheel Garden. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the Blue Pinwheels help us to remind us of what a childhood memory should be about. It should be about that young pleasure of having good memories as a child, and that's what those pinwheels represent. We also participate in the state reviews for child fatalities. And law enforcement partners do child death reenactments. And we continue to attend state trainings to help. So, this concludes my report for the Child Protection, Community Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team. I'm available for any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
We now have the annual report from Trillium, and Victoria Jackson, the Regional Vice President, will provide this report this morning.
Good morning. I'm Victoria Jackson, the Regional Vice President, one of the Regional Vice Presidents for Trillium Health Resources, and just want to thank you for the opportunity to present our annual report to you today. The update will provide you with a brief overview of who we are, a couple of data points, and our community engagement efforts. Now, there's no way that I can explain in a matter of minutes how we operationalize. So, I will give you the express version, but I want you to know that I am available at any time to you all, except for Sundays. I kind of reserve that. But please, you know, at any time, feel free to reach out with any questions. As you may know, we are one of four LME MCOs in the state of North Carolina that manage care for individuals with the most severe behavioral health needs. And I say severe because that's going to be important to reference later on in the presentation. So, it's individuals with the most severe behavioral health needs that have Medicaid benefits, have no insurance, or is underinsured. At the heart of what we do, we are committed to transforming lives and strengthening community well-being through strong partnerships with stakeholders such as yourself. Most of our work involve connecting individuals to a network of providers. So, we contract with behavioral health and physical health providers for our individuals to receive clinical treatment. So, that connection, there's no wrong door to access, is what we promote, meaning that they can go to a provider agency and receive services, or they can contact us, and we'll make that connection to the clinical services. On this slide, you will see that geographically, we are the largest of the four LME MCOs that operate the Taylor Plan. We cover 46 counties, a total population of about 3.1 million. And within that 3.1 million, there's a breakdown that you see here with the benefits that we cover under Taylor Plan for members, Medicaid Direct for members, and then also the uninsured. So, you see the breakdown of 83,000, 132,000, and 287,000 for those who are uninsured. Now, those numbers are fluid because they fluctuate from day to day, depending on the eligibility of the person. So, the person can move from a state uninsured plan to a Medicaid plan, and so, those numbers will change. Local connections are very important to us. We will not know how to serve our counties unless we are in the counties, hearing from the community stakeholders about what the local needs are. Because we cover such a vast area, to do this, to keep these local connections, we establish five regions. As you can see here on the slide, in the green is our north, northern region. In the purple is our north central region. The blue represents our southern region, and the orange represents the mid-state region. That's over in the Guilford County area. And in the yellow is where Onslow County falls. That's the south central region. And that spans from Simpson County all the way over to Carteret County. In each region, there is a regional advisory board. And we also have a Consumer and Family Advisory Committee with local appointed representatives. What I can say to Onslow County are you all are very well represented. You are represented not only at our regional boards, but our CFAC, as well as the governing board. You have a person that represents Onslow County on the governing board. Listed on this slide is a list of your advisory board membership, also the CFAC members, as well as the staff that is currently working your counties as well. I would be remiss if I did not openly thank Ms. Carrie Sanders. She, Onslow County was new to me. She welcomed me. She helped me understand what the needs were, and she helped me understand what we were doing well and what we were not doing well. And so, I just want to thank her for, for her time and just her wisdom around Onslow County. Newly appointed is Vice Chairman Knapp. I am looking forward to working with you, Commissioner Knapp. So, I will make sure you have all my contact information. Actually, everyone will have my contact information. It is not a call center. It is not an agency desk phone. It is my cell phone number. And I want you all to have that. If you have any questions, please feel free. If you have concerns, please feel free to give me a call. And that number is located in your packet. So, you should have, should have that. Next on this slide is just a couple of data points. As you can see, from July to December 2024, we served overall as an organization, a little over 80,000 unique individuals with severe behavioral health needs. For mental health, 57,388. Substance use, 15,583. And intellectual developmental disabilities, 18,537. So, the other thing to note with these numbers is that individuals may have co-occurring diagnosis. So, you may find that someone also received mental health services, as well as substance use services. So, those numbers are fluid as well. Total spent on services is a little over $802 million. And that's just for the July to December timeframe. For Onslow County specifically, we served a total of 4,579 members during that time. Here, you can see the breakdown by disability groups, and again, just referencing that this is an unduplicated count. Taylor Plan. I'm sure you all have heard about the Taylor Plan. It had been in the works for years now. So, we did launch that plan, July 1 of last year. With this plan, previously, we were only managing behavioral health services for the most severe individuals. Now, we are also managing physical health, vision, pharmacy, long-term support services, and non-emergency medical transportation for, for individuals that are part of our Taylor Plan. It was a lift. It was a heavy lift. We went through a major consolidation, and then had to turn around and launch the Taylor Plan. So, with that, there were lessons learned. With any consolidation and launch of a plan of this magnitude, we're going to find lesson learned. We were not going to get it all right, right? So, we want to make sure that we can identify those areas, and what we found that there was a significant increase in call volume, which reflects that we needed to do better communication. And so, we noted that as a lesson learned. We also saw that we needed to collaborate more with our transportation vendors. We have a broker that we work with, which is Motive Care. And so, we have been working closely to make sure that individuals can get to their appointments. It's not, it was not easy, and it was definitely some, some areas that we had, we have to enhance, and I'll say that. And so, that was another lesson learned, as well as the need for extension of provider flexibilities. One of the things that we worked really hard on was ensuring that during this change, that members did not fall through the crack, that their services were not interrupted. So, that's another lesson learned, working with the state to implement provider flexibilities. Another area to highlight, and what we found with some of our counties is understanding who we cover versus the standard plans, who they cover. So, we're not the only health plan that cover individuals that have Medicaid. We have five standard plans that the Department of Health and Human Services put in place back in July of 2021. And those five standard plans are private companies: AmeriHealth, Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina, United Healthcare of North Carolina, WellCare of North Carolina, and then Carolina Complete. The standard plans, while we cover the individuals that have the most severe needs, they cover individuals that have mild to moderate needs. In this next slide is just a snapshot, a refresher of North Carolina Medicaid transformation. Again, standard plans launched in 2021. There's also a tribal option by the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians that was launched in this time period as well, July of 2021. They serve the tribal members and their families. And LME MCOs, we continue to serve, conserve people that were in the Medicaid Direct. So, you have the standard plan, the tribal option, and then Medicaid Direct. Medicaid Direct is that fee-for-service model, and it doesn't tie in the physical health component. Phase two started. We talked about the Taylor Plan. That's when the Taylor Plan launched. And now, we're in phase three. So, we're not finished. Phase three is the Foster Care Plan, also known as the Children and Families Specialty Plan. This plan will serve children and their families in the foster care system statewide. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services announced last year that Healthy Blue, Blue Cross Blue Shield, will be managing this plan, and it's slated to start December 1. So, right now, we're working with all of our partners that are, that's involved with foster care to ensure that there's a safe and smooth transition over to Blue Cross Blue Shield, Healthy Blue. Here's a breakdown of the amount of individuals we serve compared to the standard plans. Again, standard plans serve the majority of individuals on Medicaid, about 72%. And we serve 28%, 46 county-wide. And then, on the next slide is specific to Onslow County. We serve 27% of your individuals that receive Medicaid, and the standard plans serve 73%. So, they are the majority. Here is an insert of projects occurring that involves Onslow County. This is not an all-inclusive list, but we wanted to highlight a few for you. We have projects to address substance use prevention in schools, distribution of naloxone kits to community organization. And then, you see here CHESS Health. CHESS stands for Center for Health Enhancement System Studies. We partner with the Department of Health and Human Services to provide a free app to support individuals who are in recovery. It's an evidence-based model app that offers options such as daily check-ins, support group meetings. And it's also, what's unique about this, it also staff peer support specialists 24/7/365. So, this app is free of charge to our behavioral health providers and their patients. Next on the list is the Community Opportunity Centers. Now, this is in its very early stage. It's a regional community hub that support members who live in communities that experience health disparities and provides them access to resources that promote health. So, some of the services that will be provided in these community opportunity centers will focus on the social determinants of health, housing and food insecurities. But again, very early stages. I will keep you all updated on how this project is coming along. And then, there's the small business funding. We believe, and we know, that having a job and financial security are important to people. And through our small business funding project, we offer financial support for members and recipients interested in starting a new small business or supporting their current business. So, that's another project that we have going on. And lastly, I will touch on TULA. It's the Trillium Ultimate Living Assistant. This program is one of our more innovative, technology-based programs. So, it empowers individuals to improve independence through the use of enabling devices and remote supports and community-based settings. So, it's kind of like a tablet that we, we set up. And it's in partnership with a few of our providers. And the, the goal of it is to help individuals that have intellectual developmental disabilities live a better quality of life. So, that's what it's really about. So, the device can provide medication reminders, monitor your pulse. It will send a signal if your door is open, door is open, and so, it can do so much more as well. This is one of the programs that we actually won a couple of awards for. So, we're very proud of that, our TULA program. And lastly, I think this is the most important slide of them all. And it's how to get in contact with us and how individuals can connect to services. We have a member and recipient service line that operates Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We have a behavioral health crisis line with trained clinicians that will triage crisis situations. That is open 24/7/365, Christmas, Easter, we're on, holidays and weekends. And we also have some other support lines for, for our providers as well. I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? All right, hearing done. Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. We appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we go into item four, we ask that everyone in attendance make sure that you set those cell phones to silent or vibrate. And we have one opportunity for public comment, which is about to take place. These comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedure, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. Mr. Smitherman, we have anyone sign up for public comment this morning?
Yes, sir, we do. Mr. Richard Schrum.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, county manager, county attorney, and staff. I'm here to talk a little bit about public news. One of the problems we have is you have to put a lot of things in a newspaper. You have to put rezoning, property sales, maybe meeting dates. I don't know. The attorney knows all this stuff that's supposed to be put in a newspaper. The problem is that our newspaper has only got like six hundred people that get the Jacksonville Daily News. And when you put things in the Jacksonville Daily News, none of us ever find out about it. So what I'm suggesting is that you start something called Onslow Post or Onslow Bulletin Board with an app on the system so that all of these things that you send to the newspaper that we don't see, we can see on the internet. I think that would be very helpful. The second suggestion is to have a help desk with somebody that can answer the telephone. I used to look at the property records in Onslow County. And about five months ago, they disappeared, and I didn't know how to find them. Just recently, last week, something popped up on my computer that said Onslow Property Records. So I filled it out for my home address and my email address and all this information. And I clicked Send me the report. And the next page came up and said, you need to pay a dollar. And give us your MasterCard or Visa. And I figured this is some kind of scam. Who am I going to give this Visa, all this information to? So this is one of the reasons why a help desk would be very helpful. Along with all the people that move into Onslow County, I always see on the internet, they want to know what to do with their cardboard boxes. And they say, send something out on the internet for help. And if you had a help desk with somebody that actually answers all these questions and knows everything about Onslow County, that would be very helpful. And the final thing is, Westbrook, Connecticut is where I came from. They have a quarterly magazine that's sent to everybody in the mail. And a quarterly magazine is a commercial operation that's funded by advertisers. And it starts off by listing all the telephone numbers of all, like animal services and sanitary landfill, lists all the telephone numbers. And then it gives each department head an opportunity to, like Parks and Recs can talk about all the stuff they're going to do. Health Department has a site. The sanitary landfill talks about recycling and all this kind of stuff. So it's very helpful, and it comes to everybody in the town. So everyone keeps these and can refer back to them. And it wouldn't cost you guys anything to do this other than the fact that have the department heads and the superintendent of schools and the county manager write something every quarter. And I don't think that would be too bad. Even Brett could do that. That's all I have.
No pressure, though.
Thank you, Mr. Schrum. Appreciate it. Mr. Smitherman, any more comments this morning?
No, sir. That was the final one.
All right, thank you, sir. We will move to, please, your comments, sir.
General Iden.
Wait, I missed something.
Yes, you did.
My fault. Refunding resolution for property acquisition. So, Mr. Patterson, we won't skip you. We'll let you come on up.
Sure.
You can just move it and... This is a refunding application. The county is looking to purchase property that will be used for the Sheriff's Department on New Bern Highway. The property currently is going under appraisal. But the purchase price is 4.5 million. And I grossed up to $6 million to allow for any renovation that will have to be done on the properties to put it for its intended use. And this would be bundled into the debt service sale that we are scheduled in July for. This would be bundled in with the multipurpose center and the Bear Creek. And we would look to actually short this sale instead of a 20-year. That we would do this in a three-year portion.
Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Now we'll go to the manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to focus all my comments today on outreach efforts of the county. It's something that we are focused on. And we, this month, are using County Government Month as an impetus for getting out and making people more aware of the great things that our employees and departments do for their quality of life. Couple weeks ago, I think five out of seven commissioners were here, along with myself, to welcome the cream of the crop of 10th graders of our school systems, both on-board base and in the public sector, for a county close-up, where they spent a day learning about all the different functions of county government, and held a mock Board of Commissioners meeting, where we were all replaced by kids, including myself and Mr. DeSelm. They had sit-ins for all of us and did a mock board meeting. But enjoyed speaking with them. Chairman Foster and I gave remarks during that briefing, as well as, I believe, Mr. Buchanan might have said a word or two as the longest-tenured member. And I know this program means a lot to him. We also, last week, went to Dixon Middle School, where we gave a program on the emergency medical service system and how ambulances work and what the challenges of those systems, how much ambulance costs, what it takes to become a paramedic, all those things to entice children to consider those, a career in that field. We began County Government Month with Reach Week, which was a focus on the county's values. And we spent five days where every employee was engaged, had lots of activities, lunch and learns every day, and just a lot of participation among our employee base around Reach Week. We will also be at Senior Games later this month. And Senior Game signup sheet is still open for people to sign up. If you haven't had that opportunity yet, that will be closing soon. So I recommend you do that quickly. And we'll be at several other events in the community where select departments will be showcasing their wares to our citizens and the importance of what they do in making Onslow County a great place to live. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. We will now go to Commissioner comments. Anyone like to volunteer to go first?
I will. Wanted to bring up something that was on the consent agenda that I always like to bring light to, which is the Airport Parking Redevelopment Project. As I know, I've mentioned before, the airport parking lot is a huge moneymaker over there. Who would know? Great for our economic, you know, boost here in the county. And I just want to say how glad I am that we're going to capitalize on it by doing that project to see how else we can make some more money. Needs to be updated over there because people are parking in grass and stuff. So thank you, Mitch, for making sure that happens. I want to do a shout-out to the telecommunicators. Ray is still here, good. And a plug for the Sheriff's Citizens Academy, if you've never done that before. It is a phenomenal course to take. And if you want to know the ins and outs of what happens in the sheriff's office, it is so fun. And it does include a tour of the 911 Center. And I have to say, without any reservation at all, it was simply the most amazing experience to stand in a room and watch these people have all sorts of different input coming into their heads and sorting it out and making some incredible decisions and conversation happen and saving lives and directing emergency personnel. I could have stayed there all day. It was really something else. So thank you so much, Ray, for all that you do. And thank you to all the telecommunicators because they are incredible people of great intelligence and capability. And lastly, Mr. Schrum, I just wanted to say thank you so much for taking time. Is he still here? Oh, he left. Darn. Well, it'll be on the record, anyway. I love that he had some very thoughtful and creative ideas to help Onslow County think about maybe communicating better with the citizens. I thought they were some very nice ideas, and I hope we can look into them. It's a beautiful spring day, and we're going to get ready to have a little chillier weather again. So enjoy the spring. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Next?
I'll go. Soon as the microphone comes on. Push the button. There we go. I can push a button. Usually, the green light just magically appears. But I certainly want to say thank you to the folks that I've been meeting with over the past few weeks. And special shout-out to Ms. Thigpen for either not having me committed or arrested because she's so easy to talk to. I learned a lot about social services. And I appreciate your time and your staff's time and getting right up the elevator with them. They were making sure I was neat and clean as we were coming up to get to meet with you. So I really appreciate that. Just appreciate, as I'm meeting with different folks, Mrs. Hoover's here. I've gotten to meet with her. Just the depth of knowledge that you have in your area and your ability to articulate what your needs are, what's going well, what's not going well. I just really appreciate those discussions and learned a lot from each and every one of you. So thank you. I appreciate that. And to the, well, we had a full house here where attrition has happened. But just thanks for everybody that is here this morning and your investment into our county and what we do. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next? Anyone?
Okay. I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would thank everybody that came today. We had a lot of presentations. We have a lot of good, a lot of great people at Social Services and our EMS service that are working hard. And it's wonderful to have the opportunity to show them some appreciation in what they do. Also, I think all of us had an opportunity to meet with General Schrader from the Carolina Museum of the Marine in the last few weeks. And I was at their Board of Directors meeting last week. They are moving right along. I'm excited to see that we're actually going to have a Carolina Museum of the Marine. It's going to happen. And, you know, this board has supported that effort for many years now, twenty-some years now. And it's good to see it coming out of the ground and see it actually happening. So if you don't ride down toward, what is it, Montford Point? Is that the road? Yeah, if you don't ride down that road very often, you ought to ride down there sometime and see that building going up. It's going to be great for Onslow County, going to bring in a lot of tourism, I think. So we appreciate their efforts and all these years and finally getting that done. Thank you all for being here today.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you.
You ready?
Yeah, I guess so. Appreciate everybody for being here and all the proclamations we did today. It's always an honor to do those. And the telecommunicators are close to me because they're part of the public safety side of the house that I come from. One other thing I want to tell you all is, and I know that a lot of people has been pro and for it, against it. But anyhow, on the Thursday, the 10th of April, 11:00 a.m., the YMCA pool groundbreaking is going to take place. I know a lot of the citizens have asked me questions. Well, we got all this money for this pool and everything else. When are they going to break ground? Well, the ground's going to be broke on Thursday at 11:00 a.m. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Commissioner Paget?
I want to thank everyone for being here today. And if you're a citizen of Onslow County and what we heard today and our proclamation and all, there's a lot of services out here that we have professional, dedicated people that really care about Onslow County. And the people live here. It's the best place to live in the world. And I'm a president. I was born and raised here, be planning here as well. But I just want you to know, there's a lot here. Commissioner Buchanan and myself stopped at the bike trail this morning, where they're doing another phase, and it's coming along great. It's going to be real good. That trail's used a lot. And we've got the best people that we could have building this trail. Well-recognized throughout the state. So with that being said, thanks, everybody, for coming and look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Just a couple of things. Number one, I want to thank Mr. Silence and the telecommunicators. People don't realize, you know, being a law enforcement guy myself, how important telecommunicators are. They're the lifeline as far as us that are working cases on the street, you know, shots fired, things like that. They're our first line of defense and for the public, too. And from a personal standpoint, they've always been polite and responded very quickly when I had some calls at my residence with my father and my mother, my wife. And I'm very, very appreciative of what they do. And a lot of people look at law enforcement and first responders as the firefighters, the police officers, agents, whatever it might be. But they forget about the telecommunicators. Because the first thing, the first people that are going to be contacted during an emergency situation nine out of 10 times are the telecommunicators. And I know you have one or two former cops that are telecommunicators. I know one personally that I work with in the Sheriff's Department. And then he went to the Highway Patrol. So he's seen it all. So I really appreciate what you guys do, Ray. And it's an honor for you guys to be here and getting those awards. We had a lot of proclamations to piggyback off what Commissioner Paget said. This is a military community. And there's a lot of things to be thankful for. There's a lot of things that this community does that is uniquely different than other communities. We're so integrated with not only the military, but other people that come from here, specifically Jacksonville, that retire from the north, from the south, wherever it might be. You find and meet people that are from different walks of life that decided to come to Jacksonville, just not military. They just decide to come to Jacksonville and retire because of a relative or because they've been down to North Toppsel Beach. They like the area. I'm sure Rick will attest to that. He likes that area. But they come down here to retire. So, you know, when you say the south, we have a very integrated south in Jacksonville. And you got all kinds of diverse diversity here, which is unbelievable. And it feels like a military community, which is good because I'm a military child, and I grew up in that type of atmosphere. So it's really good to honor these people, to honor all the little things, even the coin collector, even though there were some words that Mr. Bennet couldn't pronounce. He got through it. So it's a unique community, and I'm very appreciative. With that being said, with the unique community, as big as our community is and all the diversity, it takes a tremendous staff to run everything that is going on in this county. We have a tremendous staff. You know, starting from our county director, and that's what I'm going to use. I hate the word manager. Starting with our county director, David Smitherman, all the way down to the assistant county directors. It's a joke. I hate the word manager. I just can't stand it. But anyway, these people do a great job of managing our large agency that we have in Onslow County, trying to please all the diversity here, all the diverse opinions, all the various types of problems that this county represents. But they do it, and they do it with their heads hung high. And I've seen some tremendous progress in the last year and a half, not only from a technological standpoint, but an advancement as far as our strategic plan is concerned, in terms of taking direction and having goals and objectives. And I keep harping on this every meeting because I can't say enough about it. It's remarkable. And, you know, we've had private conversations here recently, which are very good. It's the key to communicating. When you can communicate with your county director or you can communicate directly about an issue and resolve it and come to a conclusion instead of bickering or taking sides, that's professionalism. And that's refreshing, too. And I really appreciate that, David. I appreciate the opportunity of being honest and the commissioners here that are very open about their beliefs and things like that. That's what makes this a unique community. So with that, Ms. Jackson, good to see you. We'll be getting together and talking about Trillium. I've got some questions I didn't want to ask here. And a lot of it centers, and Carrie knows where I'm going with this, a lot of it centers around what we have in place at the Dix Crisis Center. But we'll talk offline on that. But it's good to have you aboard, and I appreciate it. So with all that, I won't be here for the next meeting. I will be off vacationing with my wife, so to speak. You'll be in Nashville, Tennessee. So I'm going to be brushing up on Talking Like This real deeply here soon because it's going to be fun. I mean, I've never been to Nashville. I'm looking forward to it. And believe it or not, I do like country music. And one last thing, go Houston.
Thank you, sir. First, a close-up Mr. Smitherman mentioned, which is something that has been highlighted in the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners last year. in the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners last year as a legacy that was started in Onslow County many, many years ago with some social studies teachers, Luisa Ringo being one of those. It was great to have all the students in the building, and the questions that they ask are really, really good questions, and the future is bright. As much as you hear, or see, or read, or think the future is dimming, I can tell you, when the folks that provide the news are always focused on the negative, then they forget about the other 95%. And I can assure you, the 95% is what's going to continue making us be a great nation, because they were fantastic, and that's where you realize how old you are, because the children of students you taught are sitting in these seats in the mock commissioners meeting. So that's always good to see that the generations come through and their parents went through close-ups. So it's great to see such an enlightening program, and they learn about where the tax dollar goes. So that was fantastic. Just can't say enough, social workers, your job is tremendous. I mean, it's, you know, just what we highlight today is just a piece of what you do, and the stories you see, the stories you're a part of writing, and the fact that you're in a position to help change the end of those stories. So we appreciate the work that you do, because the influence, the leadership, the mentorship, the tough days I know are tough, but I know there's also days that make you think that this is a great job, because of the impact that you have. So we appreciate what you do on a daily basis. Telecommunicators, great job. You know, it's always great to call 911 and somebody answers, other than when Ray said they are all here this morning. And remember that we do not support nor condone some of the comments by Ray Silas in the beginning of these presentations. So, but we appreciate what he does with his team, because without them, Sheriff Thomas wouldn't be able to get to where he needs to get to take care of business through the Onslow County Sheriff's Office. Military, Onslow County, we're intertwined. This is a community that is a fabric. It's intertwined, and recognizing the military child is so important. As being one of those recovering high school principals, I've had the opportunity to see reunification of parents when kids are surprised with mom or dad showing up at the school, or the day that mom or dad is deploying for the next year, and you don't know, you know, you don't know where, you don't know when, you don't know how they'll be returning. So, it's always wonderful in Onslow County to recognize the military child and what they mean to this community. Commissioner Bennett mentioned meeting with General Schrader and the Carolina Museum of the Marine. I always like to, when we talk about that, Carolina Museum of the Marine is the culminating factor at Lejeune Memorial Gardens. If you haven't been there, you need to go. You have the Beirut Memorial, the 911 Memorial, Montford Point Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, the corpsman Memorial, and now we're going to bring this to fruition with the Carolina Museum of the Marine, because Carolina, North Carolina and the Marine, like I said, is intertwined. One doesn't exist without the history of the other, and it's impressive to see what they do. And the last thing that I'll say before we go into a closed session is, if I'm correct, other than one of us, well, no, it's all of us, senior games, if you're 50 or older, you are eligible to participate in senior games. We're all seniors up here, so pick your game. Sign up. Be a part of the senior games, because I am participating in the golf, the miniature golf.
That's the only thing he can win.
No, I got others. We have miniature golf, Commissioner Knapp. Billiards, football toss, cornhole. Let's all get out there and get involved with all this stuff, and we appreciate you all being here.
Motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul.
Now, need to go into motion to go into closed session. Second, we are going into closed session. We will adjourn from that closed session.